Mr. Fur.
Well, you know I got about no questions to ask you guys, but I would like to make one comment. Carolyn and I was on the board previously when these Magnet Schools were talked about and implemented. And, you know, it's good just to sit here and listen to what has the questions that have been asked. And it's also encouraging to know that we came a long way in a few years. So as much as this is probably boring to a lot of people, but it's kind of good information that, you know, two years later, we can kind of recap and kind of look at things that maybe we need to improve on.
Thank you, Mr. Fur. I have just a couple of questions and then we'll begin moving forward. On the teacher recommendation slash evaluation forms, is there a difference between the form used for the STEM and the one used for IB since the subject matter and the content of the curriculum is quite different? And I guess the type of student is a little different.
That's a great question. I don't have an exact. I believe it's the same. And I only received one for when I asked the schools for the recommendation. Angie only sent me one, so I'm going to assume it's the same. Yes.
In a conversation I had with Mr. Powell today, he said that he thought that they were the same. And he did bring up a good point was that the content is a bit different. So I think that's probably something we need to at least investigate. The next part of the question is, when does the teacher perform the recommendation? Because in the policy 4154, we're talking about a 50% intervention. You know, the whole obvious portion, the whole process for 4154 is to reduce the amount of surprises to the parent and to the student. I mean, we want them to understand where they are, where they're walking all along so that they have an idea of what's going on. And the 50%, at the 50 percentile, if the child is having or the student is having issues with grades, but the teacher is supportive, they should know that the teacher is supportive. If the child is on borderline on the grades and the teacher is not supportive, then the student should kind of have an idea, especially if the teacher should not, you know, due to whatever circumstances, not be a part of the teaching process. And then we're left with an interim in the middle because, you know, we're not just going to hire someone to do half the year and another person to do the other half the year. It doesn't work usually that way in our... So was the plan to have both of those in the intervention? Or intervention is not the right word, but when you look at their scores and you begin to wonder, is this child going or is this student going to be a borderline student? Are we beginning to alert the parents early in the process, not wait till the 75 percentile where there's very little time to react and to create a change in behavior?
Right. So I would point the board to C3. And as we adjusted that language, first, a couple of key things. Number one, we're notifying all students, we're notifying every student in the pipeline, that's a change, of their standing with in terms of the magnet expectations. Well, you see the magnet expectations, part of the magnet expectations are your teacher recommendation and your grades and any data that we have regarding whether you'll be proficient on an EOG. So at that 50th percent mark, every kid in sixth grade is going to get a letter that says, hey, Mr. Shoemaker, here's your standing in return, in respect to our standards, your teacher recommendations, here's what your teachers are saying, here's what your grades say, here's what your historical EOG and your DE data says. And that'll kind of be that communication tool with the parents so that there's no surprises.
All right, so.
And Jim, my question is...
Yes, Mr. Williams?
We've changed at J&amp;Freeze this year. Now, at the end of each quarter, we mentioned every student that has received a D in any of their courses received a letter saying that, and may remind them of our guidelines for moving forward in the program. I don't think that was the case in the past. I think it was only if a child received an F on their report card. So there might have been some instances last year where it might have been a surprise at the end of the year. But I wasn't through that process. But this, that was the place Dr. Khan had talked to me about before we left. She said, this is what we're going to do, and that's how we're going to move forward from here.
All right. But this is even a little bit more...
The policy is even more...
A little bit more...
Correct. The policy is even more comprehensive than what Dr. Khan, you know, doing on her own said, we're going to go all the way up to Ds. Now, the policy is saying every kid's going to get a, get a letter that's going to lay out where they stand in relation to this criteria that you see before you. So there should be no surprises to a family.
All right. So implicit in the magnet expectations are actually two components. The component of the teacher survey or recommendation and the grade component.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then they will get another, based on this procedure, they'll get another one at the 75 percentile.
You don't want to be doing that first quarter.
Saying it through teacher comments.
Okay. And so they'll get, they'll also get another update at the 75 percentile or more frequently if the school chooses to be more proactive than that. Okay. Thank you. All right, board members, we've, are there any other comments or questions that you would like to ask Dr. Van Heukellem or three principals?
Maybe not a question, but my recommendation, I guess, would maybe be to, if there's a requirement of a grade point average to stay above 80, to stay in, then perhaps there should be a grade point average requirement to get in or maybe remove that grade point average requirement from the continuation guidelines, I guess. I'm sitting here thinking of a child who's between a 70 and an 80, who is doing the best they can, then they kind of get caught up in that if they do drop just a little bit by the EOG. Or maybe removing that EOG requirement altogether. I don't know. That's kind of my thoughts, I guess. And then, like you had mentioned before, splitting the IB versus STEM teacher recommendation or maybe include a narrative piece or something of that, that nature to make it more tailored to the STEM program versus the IB.
Board members, are there any other comments? All right. So we're left with a decision, and that is, we need a motion to either accept what Dr. Van Heukellem is deemed the process for the IB and the STEM continuation criteria. So entertaining some type of motion to move us forward.
I guess I'd make a motion that we approve the elementary and high school and, let's see, eliminate the use of any EOG score for continuation at the, at the middle school level and maybe reduce the, and reduce the grade point average to a 70%.
All right. Mr. Walter, you had, the motion was to...
What's the C average? 77? 77%?
Actually, a C average would be a 70 next year with the new grading scale by DPI.
Okay, more than a C average.
Yeah. And at the appropriate time, if I could make some comments about the, what I perceived ramifications of that decision.
Yes, well, as soon as we get to discussion, I'll give you that opportunity. All right. Before we move forward, I want to make sure I understand your motion. So you would like to approve the continuation chart or the flow diagram for high school and for elementary school?
That's correct, and that includes the ninth grade.
Okay. So high school nine through 12 and elementary one through, K through five. Then you would like to alter the middle school. And you wanted to reduce the grade point average to 70, eliminate the...
A C average.
Okay. Well, it'll be a 10-point scale with the base on the new policy, but we'll say C average and then we'll put in 70, reduce GPA to 70 or C. And then you wanted to eliminate the EOG component.
For the continuation only.
For the continuation only. All right, board members, do we have a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay. So we have a second now. I'll open the floor to discussion. And Dr. Van Heukellem, you'd like to say a few words.
So that, that motion concerns me for a couple of reasons. Number one, it eliminates any quantitative approach to evaluation. So you have just now made the continuation purely subjective. Teacher grades are highly subjective. Teacher recommendations are highly subjective. While we have great teachers in this district, there are also a lot of students who are highly capable that perform in the 90th percentile and higher, who have bad grades, who don't have teacher-pleasing behaviors. And those are students we want in the J&amp;Freeze Magnet School. Those are Albert Einsteins. Those are the kids that don't do school very well but are simply brilliant. If you go that route, you will not give those students an opportunity to continue in the pipeline. So you've eliminated the qualitative metric. I understand the intuitive desire to eliminate an EOG, but the truth is that EOGs are a pretty good predictor of student success in our upper-level classes. Again, I want to point you to our, all of our other middle schools. Every single middle school in this district uses the 85th percentile to get into upper-level math. That's pretty high. It's very high. That means you're in the top 15% of the state of North Carolina. We already go down to the 45th percentile to scoop up those kids that we think can do it and get them into this program. And we work with all those kids to make sure they get to Math 1 in eighth grade. Going lower than the 45th percentile sets students up for failure to continue in that accelerated track. The other piece is I think you would redesign the nature of J&amp;Freeze Middle School. I believe if the, the PTO and the parents at J&amp;Freeze knew what we were doing tonight, they would have a lot of concerns because what we hear over and over again from the students and the parents is, I love this school because every kid here is, wants to learn, wants to be here, and is performing at a very high level. I've never had that, that in my life. And what we know about accelerated students is when you put them together, they accelerate their own learning. And so if you pass that tonight, I would anticipate that the parents at J&amp;Freeze would have significant concerns because, you know, that's what they've come to know and appreciate about J&amp;Freeze. It is a different school. It was designed differently, and what you're really choosing to do is redesign the school. And so all the things that we've had about J&amp;Freeze and the outcomes we've had could potentially change by that redesign. So that would be my caution to the board in that.
I would certainly be willing to wait for parent input for a month.
Would you, would you enlighten us in what, what does that mean for you?
Like you said, I'm absolutely interested in the parent input on that, on that school. I think that would be a value. I think that's a value for all these things. And that's why, like I said earlier, being presented with this information today and being asked to vote on it, I think that's, doesn't give us an opportunity to, to get the parent involvement that really needed to be part of this anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Any other comments, board, on this motion? Mr. Harrison?
I'll say the word again, slippery slope. The effect of the motion is to lower standards. I'll stop there. I know the intent is good, but the effect would in effect be to lower the standards in these programs which are intended to be rigorous.
Mr. Walter, I'll get back to you in just a minute. Let me, let everyone else have a chance.
No, I'm just ready to vote.
Okay. Mr. Phillips, Dr. Phillips?
I don't know what I'll do. Maybe I should request being called Dr. Mister. Okay. But, yeah, I agree with you, Jason, on the EOG scores. I think including it, it doesn't exclude anybody. I mean, they're, they're going to be kids that, you know, they don't do their homework and therefore their grades aren't that great, but they know this stuff and they do okay on the EOG, so why kick them out? So I, I don't think by including the EOGs, we're excluding, you know, that, that's a bad thing. I am just glad that that's not the only criteria we use because that would be very unfair.
Any other comments from this end? Ms. Carpenter?
I don't see any problem with keeping them, and I think what we've got before us is just fine. And I think we're picking this thing to death, and I think we're lowering the standards, and I don't want to see that. I think what we, we've already been recognized for having a good program. We were just recognized for it. And I don't think the state would have given us an honorable mention if it wasn't good. So I think we've got something good. Why pick it to death? And I think the parents, what I've seen of it, and seeing that, I've been over to Freeze many times, and I don't want to mess up something we've got that's going good.
Mr. Powell?
How many, how many students did not pass their EOG at Freeze last year? Do we have some data on that or?
It's pretty high. Twelve students that were at Freeze. Twelve students, okay. That were at J&amp;Freeze. STEM, IB, eighth graders.
So Bridgette has a small sample. It's the eighth graders. Last year in this, just in the STEM side, there were 12 STEM eighth graders who did not pass the EOG. So they had to go down that right-hand side of the, of the qualification. They had to receive either grades, their overall average, or teacher recommendation. You know how many were able to come Central by chance? So eight out of the 12 made it through that right-hand side. Four out of the 12 did not make it. So again, remember, we're trying to have a safety net, right? We've got multiple safety nets to catch kids. And here you have, let's say there were 112 kids. 100 kids passed the EOG, they're in. 12 kids did not. Eight out of 12 were able to continue with our current criteria because they did have the teacher recommendations and they had the grades. Four did not. So out of 112, four did not go on to ninth grade at Central. That's a great example. Thank you.
Out of 112, 12 did not pass.
12 didn't pass the EOGs. And then of that 12, only four did not make it through the right-hand side.
Where did I hear the number? 70 and then 40? 40 did not continue in the program. They were sent back to their home school from Freeze? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. And that's IB, STEM together, and sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So approximately 10%.
So school-wide, approximately 10%?
Less than 10%. Yeah, they have close to five, 450, six...
The data that you gave us before was 70 students or 77 students, something like that, did not pass the EOG, one or the other, and that 40 were removed.
Okay. So seven...
From the, from the sixth and seventh grade.
So in that example, 70 didn't pass the EOG, 30 got to go on through teacher recommendations and teacher grades, 40 did not.
There's, there's my answer. Why we nitpick it? That just seems like a, a big number to me for, for a small population, but maybe overall it's not.
Mr. Walter, you had another comment?
The issue for, issue for me is if you have a student who wants to stay in that program and may not have met these criterias, that student shouldn't be involuntarily removed from the program. I think we need to give kids a better, better opportunity. Middle school, you know, they're coming just from elementary school to middle school. I mean, it's a whole new world, and here we are treating them like they're college students. I think we need to build our, continue to build our pipeline in the middle school level. I think we need to make it more representative, as we mentioned in one of our policies here, of the student population as a whole. I think we need to engage student, engage students who have an interest in science. I think that is more important than how they necessarily perform on the middle school level when it gets up, sure, at the high school level. But, you know, it's, it's, we have a misrepresentation in this school, and I guess that's been created that, created that way. But I'd like to see more kids be able to take advantage of the STEM. I think that's the going, you know, more representative for minorities. I think we need the representative for all, all groups here. And I think we've, we've kind of eliminated that by keeping this as rigorous as it is. But it is, you know, that's, that was my intent is primarily, if a student wants to stay in this program at the middle school level, they ought to have the opportunity to do that and then make that decision prior to them going to high school if they're, if they're a candidate to continue or not.
All right, board members?
I'm sorry. So your motion is only to remove the EOG requirement for sixth grade and seventh grade. The eighth graders continue on with this requirement. Is that correct? Okay. So the fundamental student that comes to J&amp;Freeze is still governed by the EOG requirement that was in place prior. Is that correct? If, if, based on his motion, is that correct?
I'm just trying to keep kids in the pipeline. And for if they have a bad year or something or bad test score, bad grade, they shouldn't be involuntarily moved. If they want to leave the program, that should be a parent and student decision. I don't think doing this high-stakes testing is, is a healthy way to do that.
All right, board.
Restate the question.
No, wait, yeah, I'm going to restate. The, the motion that Mr. ... Excuse me. I have the floor here. The motion that Mr. Walter asked for was to approve the high school and elementary school criteria. However, in the middle school, which is the rising sixth graders and seventh graders and the rising eighth graders, because it would be eighth graders rising to ninth grade that would then be under the subject to the criteria of the high school. So it would be sixth, seventh, and eighth. Those would be, would be to reduce the GPA to a C average or a 70 and to eliminate the EOG criteria for continuation for those three grades. So that is the motion. And board members, it's time for us to vote. So all in favor of this motion, say aye. We have two. All in, all opposed, say no.
None.
And so it's five to two. All right. So motion is not carried.
Who were the two that voted for?
Mr. Powell and Mr. Walter voted for, and the rest of us voted against. All right. I think going forward, though, you should investigate this teacher form.
We still need to, we still haven't approved anything. So we still need to...
Okay, yes. So now, now we need a motion to approve this. I'm sorry, guys. All right. So I'll need a motion to approve the criteria that was presented to us by Dr. Van Heukellem and company.
So moved. Second.
All right. All in, I'll again offer it up for discussion. Any other discussion on this? All right. Board members, all in favor of approving the criteria as noted on the flow diagram, say aye. Aye. Oppose?
No.
All right. And passes five to two. Thank you. All right. And so you will look at that teacher form, Dr. Van Heukellem?
Yes. What I'm hearing the board say is a differentiated teacher recommendation form, one for IB and one for STEM. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, we can do that.
And also the second notification language needs to reflect what's in the policy.
Yes, on the flow chart, we're going to... Absolutely. Yeah, we'll change both of those things.
All right. So board members, we're going to move forward to Policy 7420, which is the superintendent contract. This is our first reading. I will open this for discussion. Are there any comments on this particular policy? We're on 7420, which is 9.3.
I just want to edit in the bottom of the second, second paragraph, or I guess the second to last sentence. If the board elects a superintendent who is found not to be qualified, add the word "found." Repeat that. It says if the board elects a superintendent who is not qualified. Well, I don't think we're going to elect a superintendent that's not qualified. If the superintendent is found not to be qualified, it's a different story. So that's why I think what the intent was, I might be wrong, but I think that's what it sounds like to me.
I mean, yeah.
If that's a change you want us to make, we can make that edit.
Does that, is that consistent with what we intend in this?
I mean, I think that's just tracking this. I think that's, the statute says that if you elect someone that doesn't meet the qualifications, it's null and void. So I think this, this policy is tracking the statutory provision. In other words, if you, if you, if you were to elect someone that was not a resident of Cabarrus County, that would be null and void, and you'd be required to do a new appointment for someone that was a resident of the county, just as, as an example. But I don't feel, I think that probably happens as a matter of statute, so I don't feel strongly about elimination of that sentence, if you want. I mean, it's not going to change what the law is if you don't want to put it in the policy. I'm, I don't, I don't feel strongly about that.
Well, does the statute say that, that we can nullify the contract after signing it if we discover this? That would be my only concern is because you called it out as a null and void, and that might have been, you know, a couple months after the fact, and then we, then we sever this person because we found out something we didn't know.
The statute is almost identical to this draft of the policy. 115(c)-271a states, if a local board elects a superintendent who is not qualified or who cannot qualify under this section, then the election and the contract are null and void, and the board shall elect a person who is qualified. So even if you signed a contract with someone who was not qualified or could not become qualified, it would be void. They could not enforce that contract. So if they don't meet the other criteria, if they couldn't become a resident or they didn't hold the superintendent certificate, it's, it's void as a matter of law. So, so, so I think the law is clear. This is just, I think it's in the policy just as a reminder that it's, it's null and void. I guess, I think it probably makes sense to have it in there, but since the law is the law, I don't feel strongly about that sentence. But the sentence is an accurate statement of what the law is.
Mr. Walter, you, do you still stand by where you are on this?
I'd make the, make the motion to add the word "found," but, you know, whatever. If you want to leave it as is, that's fine with me, too.
Okay. Board members, are there any other issues or any other changes or alterations that we need to this document? Hearing none, I would like a motion to, that we deal with this document in an appropriate way.
So moved to accept the document as is.
Second.
All right. Mr. Harrison made the motion. Mr. Fur seconded it. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the motion's carried. Let's move on to the next one. We're at 9.4, which is Policy 7422, deputy associate superintendent contracts. Are there any comments on this? This is, this is actually a new policy, but it probably reflects existing wording in another. Is that true?
Yeah, it's not, it's new policy, but it's not, we didn't write it. In other words, it's a new policy recommended by the School Board Association. And again, from what the attorneys and Ms. Jones said, this is based on some things in some other counties. So strongly recommended to pass by the School Board Association. And everyone, attorneys and our HR people agreed, yes, this is a policy that we would want to pass.
Any comments on this policy? I'd like to have a motion that we select this policy.
Move. So I move to accept the policy as is.
Mr. Harrison moves for the acceptance and...
Second.
Mr. Powell seconds that. All in favor of this policy, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Policy passes. 7425, which is on section 9.5, which is our school administrator contracts.
Again, modifications to existing policy based on some court cases. I think there's a reference to a case from New Hanover County. Again, strongly recommended, something attorneys and HR recommend that we pass.
Mr. Chair, one thing I noticed in looking over, you'll see in the, in the policy regarding non-renewal of teachers, I've suggested adding a clause based on the discussion last week saying that if the board is going to go against a renewal recommendation that you would offer... offer a hearing. If you accept that change, it probably makes sense to have that same language added here, and I haven't had a chance to do it. But in other words, the question would be if the superintendent brings forward a contract for renewal, and the Board says, you know, we're deciding not to renew, we're not going to renew it, do you want to give notice and an opportunity of a hearing for that non-renewal, or do you want to vote on it? That's a question both for administrative contracts and for teachers. So you're not required to do it. I think some of the concern was raised last time about, and one of the issues that came up in this Toby Williams case was, the teacher had no idea that the Board was going to not accept the superintendent's recommendation, so the Board just on its own said, we understand you're recommending, but we don't like the teacher, and we're going to say no based on what we know about the teacher, without notice. That was the concern. And it would be my recommendation, if you're going to do that, it probably makes sense to give notice in a hearing, so you can say, hey, we've decided we're not inclined to accept the recommendation, but you give the teacher an opportunity to be heard on that rather than just find out the non-renewal. But, so, but they're related. I bring it up here, but it's also, you'll see the language I drafted in the teacher thing. I think it should be consistent, though. It probably makes sense to teach, to treat administrators the same way as teachers. If you're going to give notice of a hearing on one, you should probably do it on both.
Any comments?
Is that the reference? Is that the general statute, 115(c)(325.1), that last one on the list?
But there is not, as it's currently drafted, there's not actually a requirement of a hearing for non-renewal. If you're going to, there's a requirement for, if the superintendent recommends non-renewal, the teacher has an opportunity to ask for the explanation of that and bring it. But if the superintendent says, I recommend renewal, and the Board says no, as currently structured, it's just you provide notice, but there's no hearing.
What is that? Is that, that's not that 115(c)(287.1) they keep referring to in that?
Yeah, 287.1 is, hold on one second, and I'll, and I want to make sure it's not one of the new ones that got changed, but that's, 287.1 is the, is just the fact that you're going to hire principals and assistant principals under two- and four-year contracts. That's what, that's what 287.1 is. So this is part of the, it's a reference to the hiring section on that. Hiring and non-renewal. So, and again, so part of it does address it. What 287.1 says about non-renewal is, if the Board decides not to offer a new, renewed, or extended contract, it shall notify the administrator by June 1st of the final year, and it can be done for any reason that's not arbitrary or capricious. So again, the current, this law doesn't say you have to have a hearing. You can have a recommendation, you can say, we know that, we know that principal, and we're not renewing that principal's contract. You, the Board, have a right to do it, simply vote no, and they are, you know, non-renewed. The question is, in light of this recent case decided last year, the case was concerned because the Board considered information that wasn't in the personnel file and wasn't brought up by the administrator. This was information about how the teacher performed and some stuff from the community. There were due process concerns raised about, hey, no one knew that the Board was going to do that. And I do think that's a concern, if the Board just decides on its own, not based on anything in the personnel file or from the administration, to just say no, do you want to have some hearing and an opportunity? My advice would be, even though it's not required by law, to avoid a lawsuit like the Toby Williams one, probably makes sense to go ahead and give notice. You have the right to non-renew, but I think notice that we're going to go against the superintendent's recommendation probably makes sense. You'll, you can, I think, avoid, hopefully avoid the risk of a lawsuit later, saying it was arbitrary, by saying, we want to give notice, we're not going to renew that principal, despite the superintendent's recommendation.
What does it mean by notice? 30-day, 90-day? What defines notice as it would be appropriate for this policy? I'm all for notice and due process. What's the meaning?
That's a, well, we could specify, because there are a bunch of different notice provisions in the section, but usually, usually it would be notice and an opportunity for a hearing, much like we do when we have a grievance hearing or something, where we would say, this is going to be our decision, and we give them some opportunity for a hearing at the next Board meeting or within, you know, a few weeks. We could, if you want, it may make sense to try to talk about a specific period, since we're creating it by policy, and I have not yet, you know, put that one in, but I think you'd want to give some, you know, I'm thinking at least five or 10 days of notice, so it's be an opportunity for them to know. I will say that this happens very rarely. I don't, I'm scratching my head to think of times where the Board has gone against a renewal recommendation. I mean, I think it's a very, it's certainly not something that happens even on a yearly basis. It may be something that happens once in 10 years, where the Board is going to say, yes, we understand the superintendent's recommended him for renewal, and we're still going to say no. But you've got the right to do it. It's just a question of, do you want to include other procedural safeguards, or do you want to just exercise that right and deal with the...
15 days is enough time for someone to get their guard.
No, no, well, it's, this would be notice of an opportunity to a hearing, so they could come before the Board and understand why the Board is non-renewing them and present evidence. The concern in this case was, if there's just sentiment in the community about concerns with the, with the teacher, should they have an opportunity to be told, hey, we're going to non-renew you based on this incident, and an opportunity to respond?
Or to appeal.
It's basically like an appeal, but it would be before the actual termination vote, as opposed to firing them and then having them try to bring suit or challenge it. That's the thought there.
Would it be appropriate to use some of the language in 7950, which we are already reviewing, and just add it to this, which has a 10-day grievance period or, you know, from the superintendent's recommendation, I believe that's what it is? And, I mean, I think that would help us settle down on, because that one has later than, no later than June 1st, and the teacher may within 10 calendar days receive the superintendent recommendation request written notice. This will be the administrator. Is that the...
Yeah, I think that's a logical... Yes, I think that'd be a logical provision. If you'd like, if the Board want, what I'd suggest, I mean, this will come back for a second reading, and I see Glenda, she may have thoughts, too. We could draft that language, probably that is the logical reference, and bring it forward as a potential consideration in January for your second reading, if you want to do that.
The other thing I was going to add there is that the statute varies from, on administrators, notifications by May 1st. For teachers, it's a later date in June that the superintendent has to notify them. So there's a date for superintendent notification, and there's a date for Board notification. So I think we can, you can draft the language around a 10-day notice for hearing and that type of language, but we just have to be careful to not mirror the exact dates because of statutory, which Mark would just, when he gets into doing that, would see, but just didn't want to leave with the false impression there that we could mirror the exact dates.
So, Mr. Walter, did you have something to say? Well, I was just going to suggest that Mr. Enrique would do the wordsmithing on this and pass it on to the Policy Committee.
Yeah, we were, in this case, the Policy Committee, per se, and administrator, this is all really HR and legal requirements, so the Policy Committee, I think I can speak and say, is just going to defer to the attorneys to say, tell us what to do. So we went through the review of the policy. Now it's just, we're kind of adding this provision that districts have the right to add, and it looks like in other cases we have, so we just said, we just want this to be right legally. It wouldn't be something I think we take back to the Policy Committee, we're just going to comply. And so if Mark sends us that provision, we just add it, and we'll bring it back to you on second read.
So could we go ahead and pass this and send it to you for the wordsmithing, and then have the second reading include this additional language, and we would just pass it with...
You can, you can, and the reason, I do want to make sure, and this really isn't a Policy Committee or even administration issue as much as a Board issue. This is, my proposal does reduce, in one sense, it limits the Board's own right to fire someone without hearing. In other words, you get a recommendation that says, we recommend that you renew, the Board has a right to simply say no, and they're out. I'm suggesting, from a legal standpoint, it's probably better to give notice and have that hearing, but I want you to, but I'd like, so I can easily, definitely draft it, but I wanted to raise it with you to make sure you were comfortable with that provision, because it is a, it's a, it is arguably a restriction on rights you're given under the statute. I think, particularly in light of this new case, I think it's a good idea, so that's why I'm recommending it to you, but I wanted at least a head nod or a sense of the Board. If you want me to go that direction, I'll draft it, but I didn't want to draft something restricting you without making sure that that was a direction the Board wanted.
So do we need a formal motion, or...
I don't, does anybody have concern with that approach? Let me ask it that way. If not, I'll draft it, and then you can do, we'll do it.
All right, so this will go to second reading after you've finished doing the draft work on it, and we'll see it in January. Thank you. All right, Board members, we don't have to do anything with that one.
Do you want us to...
We'd like you to approve it on first reading.
So we approve, so I move that we approve the amended, the policy as presented, and ask that the Board Attorney add additional language, providing a hearing in the event of a non-renewal.
Second.
All right, and Carolyn seconded it, so did Rob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All right, Board members, let's see if we can get 7635 out of the way, and then we'll take a break.
This is also a new policy from the state. It's a return-to-work policy. It's a provision that we've really acted under in our district, so it's not anything new, but again, strongly recommended. Everybody involved recommends that. Last time, it was recommended to us to put into the policy that they could challenge their assignment by submitting a grievance and refer to that policy, and that's what changes is in the policy, per Board recommendation.
Board members, any discussion? Do I have a motion that we approve this for first reading?
Move to accept on first reading.
David Harrison moved for...
Second.
And Robert Walter seconded it. Any discussion? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries, 7-0. All right, 7950, let's try to get this one in. This is the non-career status teachers, non-renewal. It was what I just was referencing in relation to the assistant superintendent policy. Any comments on this? All right, Board members, looking for a motion to approve, to send this to the second reading?
I'll make the motion, that we move that to second.
And I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? If there is none, then I'm going to ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All right, so let us take a five-minute break. Is that enough time? For a bio break? Then let's do it, and we'll be back in, at 9:01.